Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Hello, good evening. We are going to get started. If everybody could please take a seat. All right, we will, uh, we're gonna start our meeting now. Welcome to the March Hoboken Board of Education Meeting. We have a very exciting night tonight. We'll be recognizing our students. Um, and in addition to that, we will be recognizing, uh, the New Jersey educators and service professionals of the year. So with that being said, let's get started. Ms. Good, do you, uh, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon dot four dash six. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January eighth, two thousand twenty-two. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believe that this meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on CATV channel seventy-seven and Files Channel forty-six. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in the electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we take the roll call, please?
Ms. Katamatory.
Here.
Ms. Delira.
Here.
Mr. Delator.
Here.
Ms. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Clutful. Ms. McGurk. Ms. Simons. Mr. Kirian.
Here.
Ms. Angley.
Here.
You have a call.
Okay, at this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Johnson.
Good evening. Uh, this evening, we have a number of awards that we are going to be presenting, both to our Students of the Month, but also to our educators and service providers. But before we move to that part of the meeting, I just wanted to take a minute to announce something, uh, very special that happened today. Uh, today, Hoboken High School, uh, was awarded the Best Overall High School Award at the Saint Peters University Model UN Today Competition. Uh, as a result of, uh, competing against teams from across the state, um, they had eighteen individual awards, which was the most in the competition. So we want to congratulate our debate team participants. And at this time, I would like our Assistant Superintendent Sandra Rodriguez Gomez to come up and start us off on our Students of the Month.
Good evening, members of our Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, faculty, and of course, families. Tonight is an extra special night, as we will be honoring both our Students of the Month and our Governors, teachers, and educational service professionals of the year. So tonight, Hoboken Public Schools will really get to show off. We will begin with students and then transition to the Governors' awardees in a very seamless fashion. We are proud of all of our students, but those that we will celebrate here this evening have truly excelled and proven that no matter what, anything and everything is possible in our great city of Hoboken. So please, give us your attention as we celebrate all of their hard work and dedication. We will begin with Joseph F. Brant's Principal, Mr. Bartlett. He will celebrate his selection at the podium and will then introduce the Connors' Principal, Ms. Addy. She will follow the same pattern, introducing our next presenters, Principals Shannon, Mara, and Pica Pietra of Wallace Hoboken Middle and Hoboken High School respectively. Once the students have been honored, I will come back up to the podium, share brief comments, and then each principal will return to share thoughts on their Governors' awardees. They will receive their awards and flowers and will, of course, stand by for pictures with superintendent and families. With that, and at this time, I would ask Principal Bartlett to come up to the podium.
Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez. Congratulations to Otto Blanos, the Joseph F. Brant Elementary School Student of the Month for February two thousand and twenty-two. Otto was nominated by his homeroom teachers, Ms. Mangione and Ms. Jones. They nominated him for his hard work and kindness in the classroom. Ms. Mangione said, "When Otto joined our class, he was reserved at first. Once getting to know his classmates and teachers, he started to open up. Otto has gained confidence in his academic work and created positive relationships with his peers." Ms. Jones said, "I've noticed many positive changes with Otto's ability to adapt to his environment. He continues to grow as a student and friend to all in his class." Vice Principal Mara was thrilled to learn of Otto's accomplishment being our Brant Student of the Month. She said, "I had the pleasure of being Otto's kindergarten teacher last year at Wallace, and I know how hard he works to achieve his goals. Seeing him take on first grade, not only in a new school, but with new friends, has made me so very proud of him. Otto's determination and drive keep shining through in all he does. Keep up the amazing work, Otto. Otto continues to show growth in all subject areas. He takes pride in his work and helps to make his classroom a positive place. Otto loves anything to do with Pokemon or sharks. He is proud to show off his unique T-shirts and has recently taken up tennis. Otto wants to be a construction worker when he grows up to help make buildings. His personality has the ability to make anyone smile or laugh, and he has become somewhat of a jokester. When told he would receive this award, Otto at first said that he didn't really know what to say, and after giving it some thought, he said, "I'm nice and kind, and my work gets done. Keep being nice and kind and doing your work, Otto, and I am sure you will be recognized for your efforts many times over as you continue to grow. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating Otto Blanos, our Joseph F. Brant Elementary School Student of the Month." At this time, I'd like to welcome to the podium the Principal of the Connor School, Principal Juliana Addy.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. At this time, I'd like to call up to the podium Zamora Bates, the Connors' Student of the Month.
Congratulations to Zamora Bates, the Connors' Student of the Month. Zamora was nominated for Student of the Month by her kindergarten teacher, Ms. Lauren Fleischer, who is here celebrating with us tonight. Ms. Fleischer shared that Zamora is an overall outstanding student and friend. She has an extremely contagious personality that can light up any room. Zamora is such a pleasure to have in class. She always has a smile on her face and has a positive outlook on the day. Zamora is an incredibly hardworking student. She always tries her best, puts forth tremendous amount of effort into her work, and never gives up. Even when something is challenging, Zamora is always willing to accept the challenge and give it her all. She's always eager to learn. Zamora is a role model for her peers in the classroom. She truly exemplifies what it means to be a great member of the Connor School community and has all of the koala characteristics. She is qualified. Zamora is kind to her friends and is always willing to give a helping hand. She's a true team player. All of her peers and teachers love her. Zamora goes out of her way with random acts of kindness to help her friends. Mr. Azardo shared that Zamora has a passion for music that brings a zest of joy to all her classmates during music lessons. When it is time to sing, Zamora instantly smiles and sings as if she was onstage in front of a huge crowd. Her amazing voice can be heard throughout the music room and inspires the rest of the class to sing along. Ms. Kapava shared that Zamora shines during art class. She's very creative. Zamora loves to watch her friends create and gives them positive comments, lifting up their spirits during art making. She shows great leadership skills by always being ready with her art setup for the day and is not afraid to get her hands dirty while making her art projects. Zamora is always ready for a challenge and puts her own twist on every project and act I can truly admire as an art teacher. I had a set, a chance to sit down with Zamora and ask her some questions about herself. She shared that her favorite color is both pink and purple, but also likes every color in the rainbow. Zamora's favorite subject in school is music because she has so much fun singing with Mr. Azardo. She said that Mr. Azardo is also really funny. Her favorite part of Connor School is learning new things, especially learning how to read. Her favorite book is Cat in the Hat. She said that Ms. Fleischer is the best teacher in the whole world because she said that Ms. Fleischer makes her feel comfortable to ask questions in class. She also said that when she grows up, she wants to be a teacher, just like Ms. Fleischer. I asked her how she felt when she found out that she was nominated for Student of the Month award. Zamora shared that she felt so proud of herself. She also knows that her parents are so proud of her as well. I spoke with Zamora's mom, and she shared with me that she is most proud of Zamora for doing so well in school. She shared that she's so proud of how Zamora is improving in her spelling each week. She's also so proud of that, of Zamora as a big sister. She shared how Zamora helps to take care of her three old sister by keeping her company and playing with her. Zamora is a huge helper at home and helps to heat up pancakes in the morning for her sister and maybe some snacks in the afternoon. They love bonding over movies together. Her mom shared that Zamora loves TikTok and loves to dance. She's a great sharer and will often want to share her toys with her friends. Zamora is so beautiful on the outside and inside. She loves to read at home with her mom. Zamora, your teachers, parents, siblings, Mr. Sorafin and I are so proud of you. You are a bright young lady who is warm, kind, and helpful to everyone around you. You are driven with your schoolwork, and you try your best every day. You exemplify all of the qualities of a Connor's koala. We are so proud of all of your accomplishments and look forward to watching you continue to grow and succeed. Please join me in giving a round of applause for Zamora Bates. Congratulations.
At this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Martin Shannon, Principal of Wallace Elementary School.
We are here tonight to celebrate Veer Bardwaj, our Wallace Student of the Month for February two thousand twenty-two. Veer is a second-grade scholar at Wallace Elementary School and was nominated by Mrs. Pukash. Veer carries himself with a quiet confidence that is contagious. He is humble, caring, kind, and respectful. He is a very good problem solver and sees a task and analyzes it and can come up with different alternatives to solve a problem. Veer is an excellent student. He is a great reader with many insightful thoughts about literature. He is an enthusiastic learner that could grasp concepts quickly and is able to apply them. He is well-prepared for class and conducts himself as an ideal student. When asked about Veer, Mrs. Pukash said, "Veer is a wonderful addition to our classroom. He always puts his best foot forward with academics. He is a very bright and inquisitive learner. Veer is an outgoing student. He's also very funny and makes me laugh a lot. He is kind and considerate to every child he meets and goes above and beyond for anyone who asks for help. Veer is one of the first children to offer assistance to any student in need. He is an amazing child that is a positive influence on his peers. As his principal, I am proud to call him our Student of the Month. I truly appreciate and value the hard work, dedication, and character Veer brings to our school community. He is a focused learner, a caring classmate, and a compassionate young man. I'm proud to have him standing next to me for this recognition." According to one of his classmates, "Veer is a really good friend. He is very nice when he plays tag, because he won't tag me because I'm his good friend." Another classmate said, "Veer is my friend, and he always helps me. Veer loves football and enjoys talking about football with his friends. He is most proud of his knowledge of sports, his love for drawing, and for being a good student." When asked about being the repres, the Wallace representative for Student of the Month, Veer said, "I am? I, I'm really excited. I have nothing to say. I'm just so happy." Veer upholds the quote, "There is no wisdom you find that is greater than kindness." Well, Veer, we certainly appreciate the kindness that you bring to Wallace Elementary School. Let's hear it for Veer, our Wallace School Student of the Month for February two thousand twenty-two.
At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Ms. Mara, the Principal of Hoboken Middle School.
It is my pleasure to introduce James McDonald, Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for February two thousand twenty-two. Nominated by several of his teachers, James is described as a respectful, hard-working student who is the epitome of a model student. Although James was surprised to learn that he was the overall Student of the Month for February, he was very pleased to hear that all of his hard work has paid off. Ms. Nodine shared, "James is a model student who is, is always prepared and participates. He is a great writer and has really found his voice this year." Earlier in the year, James was given the option to take a more advanced math class, pre-AP Algebra. At first, he was hesitant and worried about doing well. Ms. Falcone and I encouraged him to push himself, and I am so proud of him for doing so, especially with his ninety-nine average in the course. James' favorite subject by far, though, is pre-AP World History. He's always loved learning about history, and this year has been even better. Although James is not sure what career he would like to work toward, reading the book To Kill a Mockingbird has opened his eyes to the law and the judicial system, which he finds fascinating. Perhaps we have another Atticus Finch in our mists. He's not sure where he wants to go to college, but several schools top the list: Notre Dame, Villanova, Maris, Scranton, and Providence. Regardless of where he goes to school or what career he goes into, James wants to do something he enjoys, because he's always been told, "If you find a job that you love, you will never work a day in your life." What a profound statement from this young man. Speaking of family, James is very close with his family. He enjoys spending his time with his parents and his younger sister Olivia, a Wallace student. Whether it is watching movies or going outside and hanging out, they always have fun when they are together. James is also very close with Grandma. Back in third grade, they went on a cruise to Bermuda, and he could not get over how blue and clear the water was. He had never seen anything like that before. When this pandemic is finally over, James and his family will be taking a trip to Toronto. I think we are all looking forward to being able to travel freely again soon. Your mom, dad, and sister Olivia couldn't be prouder of you. I learned a few things about James while I was preparing to write this speech. James is a junior redwing, having played wide receiver and on special teams this past fall. He hopes to play in high school as well and is looking forward to be a redwing at Hoboken High School in September. He has learned to play the guitar and will be participating in Passport to Learning's kayaking program this spring. In his spare time, he enjoys playing video games and watching football. He is an avid Philadelphia Eagles fan and was even able to make it to a couple of games this year. A final interesting fact I learned about James is that a few years ago, he had a close-up in a film, God's Pocket, with Philip Seymour Hoffman. James has a close group of friends that he enjoys spending time with, Adrian, Argen, and Lucas, who all share that he is such a great friend and they are very happy for him. Please join me in congratulating our February two thousand twenty-two overall Student of the Month, James McDonald. I'll now call up Principal Piki Pietra from Hoboken High School.
Unfortunately, Nyla Garcia was unable to make it at this point, but Nyla Garcia, senior at Hoboken High School. Oh! Where? It's been on silent the whole time. Oh, no. What are you sorry for? Here's Nyla Garcia, our February Student of the Month. Nyla is a senior at Hoboken High School, and I cannot believe it. I remember when her grandmother, Sandra Smith, said, "You have my granddaughter coming next year," and she is so amazing, Ms. Peck. And Sandra was not kidding, as Nyla is a pure pleasure to have watched grow over the past four years. Nyla is impressive. She has challenged herself in all AP and honor courses over the past four years and continues to do so as a senior. Her GPA says it all, three point nine seven. She is not only academically inclined, she is very involved in the school community. She is the treasurer, treasurer of the student government, is a member of the African-American Culture Club, and also is a member of the National Honor Society. Nyla is also a three-sport athlete, soccer, basketball, and softball. Yes, impressive. Overall, teachers have shared that she is responsible and dedicated student, and her persistence is unmatched. Even when she tackles an unfamiliar obstacle, she remains focused and determined. Even more commendable is her constant inclination to help those around her. Every teacher is lucky to have a student like Nyla. Nyla has been very busy over the past few months, having applied to fifteen colleges and universities, and has been already accepted to ten. More impressive is that she has earned over two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in scholarship money. So I asked Nyla a couple of questions, and I asked her about her best experience at Hoboken High School, and she feels the athletic department has definitely been her best experience. Although I have created lifelong friendships and social abilities, I not only learn in the classroom, but also on the field or court. I have learned sportsmanship, leadership, responsibility, and commitment. As an excellent student, I asked what drives her. She says it is her family. They are also hardworking, goal-oriented, and so I want to be just like them. What is she doing after college? Well, we know she's going to university. She, she really chooses to attend a historic, historically black college or university. While still undecided, I do know that she wants to study sports management because her experience in sports made me realize that a long-term goal would be to become a sports manager or a marketer for the WNBA. The WNBA's revenue is already a fraction of the NBA's revenue. I want to support and contribute to the success of women that I look up to in sports, promoting them and their excellence. What do you do on your downtime? Playing sports, hanging out with friends, listening to music, and catching up on sleep. She considers her good friends, Janaya, Maya, Jalen, and all her teammates. Her friends would describe her as the person to go to whenever they need a helping hand or even a laugh. If she could give advice to an underclassman, what advice would that be? My advice to underclassmen is to always keep a positive attitude. Never give up, try new things, and value your time, whether it's spending time with families or friends, completing work on time or sleeping, because it zooms by in high school. Nyla's kindness and maturity will continue to guide her toward a successful and rewarding future. This young lady is going places, and we were just fortunate to be part of her journey. Congratulations, Nyla.
Before we move on to our Governors' awardees, I would like to call up Ms. Gina Matera. Ms. Matera, our, our student assistant, assistance coordinator at Hoboken High School, who in December was recognized by the Governors' Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse as the Municipal Alliance Volunteer of the Year. This award honors her commitment to ensuring that our students remain healthy and are good decision-makers. We want to take the time to honor her, congratulate her, and share her with all of you tonight for all that she is and all that she will continue to do. Congratulations, Ms. Matera. All right. Congratulations again. Now, we will be moving into our Governors' awardees. Our educators are truly at the core of all that we do and all that makes this school district great. To have been nominated by your peers, students, families, and members of the community tell us that they are exceptionally skilled, highly dedicated, experts who inspire students of all backgrounds to learn, they are collaborators, partners with colleagues, students and families to build a strong culture of respect and success. They are leaders and innovators in educational activities in school and beyond. They are admired for all that and more. They are rock stars as they make all of the above seem effortless. Their principals will now rejoin us to share testimonials, and I know you will be moved. With that being said, I would again ask Principal Bartlett to come to the podium with his first awardee of the evening.
I'd like to ask Ms. Jessica James to join me at the podium. So recently, I had the opportunity to sit down with Ms. Jessica James to discuss the results of her formal teacher observation. After we discussed her wonderful environment, she had transformed her classroom into the wizarding world of Harry Potter on the 100th day of school, and the masterful levels of engagement of the students during their math lesson, we talked about some things with which she might challenge herself. After that, recognizing there were still some minutes remaining during our scheduled conference time, I said, "Jess, I know you have a lot of things to do, but if you'd like, I can sit here and effusively praise you for 10 more minutes." Her response was something along the lines of, "No, thanks. Praise makes me uncomfortable." Whoa, I thought then just, let's wait for the next board meeting. And so here we are honoring Ms. James on her well-earned and well-deserved recognition as the Joseph F. Brand Elementary School Teacher of the Year. The mark of a great teacher is not how they craft a lesson, not how they redirect a student experiencing a challenging situation, nor how they cull through various data points to identify trends. The mark of a great teacher is how they impact lives. I have just a few examples to share with you about how Ms. James does that. I received an email from a member of Ms. James's parent community. It was about how her child was hysterically crying the day we went on winter break. She did not want to be away from her class or her teacher for even a day, a testament to the environment Ms. James provides for all of her students. When the day came to return, knowing she would be with her class again, albeit remotely, she said at breakfast, "Ms. James just makes everything so pretty and fancy." As was the case with our COVID remote learning experiences, our parents and guardians got to see in real time the amazing work of teachers like Ms. James. This one particular mom went on to say, "Ms. James just has so much patience and such a humorous approach. She makes everything more enjoyable. Because of people like Ms. James, my child loves school so much." Another member of the parent community said, "Ms. James goes above and beyond for her students and their families. People feel lucky to have and to have had her as a teacher. A familiar refrain is that students go home and are excited to tell their families about what they are learning." Beyond the impact on the students and community at large, Ms. James also has a profound impact on her colleagues. Ms. Babylonia of the second grade team shared, "Jess has a beautiful perspective on life and children. She sees who they truly are, meets them where they are, and gets them to not only believe that they are capable of even more, but actually executes that with an amazing amount of grace. Her high expectations for her kids are something to be in awe of because she does it in a way that is respectful and challenging. When a teacher truly cares, they are focused on the ideal that students are going to be someone in the world, that they have a voice, and it matters. She finds that voice and gets each and every single mind in her classroom to know their words matter and their work is something to be proud of. She is not only an educator, but an awe-inspiring soul in the world." Circling back to the words of Ms. James's class community, one mom said, these are the exact words parents use, "Ms. James is a gift." She is indeed. Her gifts and talents help all of us at Brandt, including me, see the world for all that it could be. She refuses to let a child settle for just all right, and her approach to the job of teaching will continue to benefit this community for years to come. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in a round of applause for our gift, the Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Ms. Jessica James. At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Jennifer Street to come join me at the podium. The strength of gentleness, the grace of patience, the magic of a kind word, doing the right thing no matter what it is, just because it's the right thing to do. All of these phrases accurately pertain to Mrs. Jennifer Street, the Joseph F. Brandt Educational Services Professional of the Year. The relationship between a kindergarten teacher and a kindergarten paraprofessional is so critical. It can truly make the kindergarten experience for children transformative. The relationship Mrs. Street has with Mrs. Dunn, her cooperating teacher, is a model for what this relationship should be. In Mrs. Dunn's words, "It's been such an honor to work with Jen over the past few years. She is a positive presence in the classroom and the hallways. Her cheery smile and attitude are contagious. I am so lucky to have her as a paraprofessional. She is able to help and organize the classroom beyond expectations, and she helps me with small groups for academic challenger support." Equally as important as the relationship between the teacher and the paraprofessional, the connections between the para and the students are some of the most important that need to be established and cultivated as the year progresses. Mrs. Street is at the pinnacle of what this should look like. Reassuring guidance, words of encouragement, ensuring children know that they can come and ask you for help. The students in Home Room 210 have come to understand that Mrs. Street is there for all these things and more. She is a kind soul, and the students enjoy all the time they can get with her. She's created countless crafts for the students that go with lesson themes and is willing to jump into action when students need extra support emotionally and academically. To illustrate these relationships, it is my honor to share with you in their own words the thoughts of some of the students in Kindergarten Home Room 210 about Mrs. Street. She helps us print out paper. I love her. She respects people. She helps us and Mrs. Dunn, too. She is a really sweet teacher. She is a very thoughtful and amazing woman. She helps us with the stuff we need help with. I love her so much, and she helps me when I'm hurt. She helps us spell. She's the best assistant teacher ever, and she is nice. Her warmth and compassion do not stop at her classroom door. She's built relationships with students in some of our older grade levels, and they know that she is someone who is there for them no matter how old they are. Ms. Street embodies the practice of service. She is willing to be of service in any way whenever needed. As her kindergarteners learn to read and write, as they learn their numbers, her lessons that show how easy it is to be a good person will stick with them for a lifetime as well. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in a round of applause for Mrs. Jennifer Street, the Joseph F. Brandt Educational Services Professional of the Year. At this time, I'd like to welcome back to the podium Mrs. Addie from Connors School.
At this time, I'd like to call to the podium Ms. Madeline Veda, the Connors Teacher of the Year. She has a big cheering section. I am honored to present Ms. Madeline Veda as a recipient of the GEOY Teacher of the Year for TG Connors Elementary School. Madeline is an incredible teacher on so many levels. She goes above and beyond for her students, their parents, as well as for her colleagues and administration. It first starts in Ms. Veda's model first-grade classroom, where she is an expert teacher. Ms. Veda's classroom is first-grade utopia. She has immersed herself in the Danielson framework from beginning to end and aims for fours of highly effective teaching during every minute of her class. She has such a strong command of the first-grade curriculum and beyond and continually dispays extensive knowledge of the important aspects of her discipline. Her plans and practices always reflect a wide range of effective pedagogical approaches. Anytime I walk into her classroom, review her lesson plans, or meet with her in our common planning groups, it is so apparent that her learning activities are always aligned with the instructional goals and are designed to engage students in high-level cognitive learning activities. Ms. Veda differentiates her instruction with ease and continually monitors her students' progress and provides both challenge and support based on her students' individual needs. She makes first grade incredibly joyful and engaging, while her students are soaring in their ability to read, write, and complete algebraic problem-solving. In addition, Ms. Veda continually celebrates the diversity in her classroom, honoring each and every culture while making students feel proud of their heritage, whether it is celebrating holidays and traditions that are honored around the world or having her students complete research projects on influential women in history. Ms. Veda has also built wonderful relationships with the parents of her students in her class and communicates regularly with them as she partners directly with them in their child's education. When the parents and students of Home Room 210 found out that Ms. Veda was the recipient of the Teacher of the Year award, they couldn't have been more elated and proud. The parents and students from Home Room 210 wrote special letters and notes for Ms. Veda and shared why they feel Ms. Veda deserves Teacher of the Year. I put all of those incredible letters together in a binder that I'm going to give to you later tonight, and I wanted to share a few other excerpts with you. And it will share with you really how special she is and the feeling amongst her students and families. Okay, so here's two of them. Dear Ms. Veda, truthfully, I don't think Ms. Veda deserves the Teacher of the Year award, because in my eyes, she deserves the Teacher of the Century award. And while I am never at a loss for words, I'm finding it quite difficult to do justice to the questions, why doesn't Ms. Veda deserve Teacher of the Year? Where to begin and where to end, and when the list of reasons seems so infinite? Ms. Veda is as kind and thoughtful as she is generous and loving. Her passion and dedication are beyond admirable. Her energy and creativity know no bounds. She loves her job, her students, and her school. She pours her heart and soul into every single day and, more importantly, into every single student. She has earned the love and respect of her students, her parents, and the faculty. Day in and day out, this superhero teacher has a smile on her face and positive attitude no matter what. They say some people are just meant to be teachers. Clearly, they were talking about Ms. Veda. She embodies everything it means to be an incredible teacher, an amazing role model, and a trusted resource for her students. She is a teacher you dream of for your child. And then, once you have her, she is the one you wish could be your child's teacher every year they're asked. Okay, they're very excited. Okay, on a more personal note, I will be forever indebted to Ms. Veda for all the time, energy, patience, and help that she has given to my son and me. She truly values the importance... Sorry, on a more personal note, I will forever be indebted to Ms. Veda for all the time, energy, patience, and help she has given to my son and to me. She truly values the importance of a teacher-parent partnership, for which I am so grateful. Thanks to Ms. Veda's unwavering support and willingness to help, my son has come a long way and is where he is today. He and I are both so lucky to have Ms. Veda in our lives, and she will forever hold a special place in our hearts. There are truly no adequate words to describe the immense gratitude, respect, and appreciation I have for this incredible teacher, but one thing I know for sure, there is no one who deserves the Teacher of the Year more than Ms. Veda. Simply put, she is the best. I have a short poem that I want to share with you also, from the Broder family. Ms. Veda is a teacher, but she's so much more than that. She's the Teacher of the Year, and to that we tip our hats. Being a great teacher requires lots of different things, patience, nurturing, understanding to give children their wings. It's giving of your time, morning, noon, and night. It's teaching them politeness, what is wrong and what is right. It's teaching them to read and write, and to think and to explore, drying tears when someone's sad, and two plus two is four. It's inspiring little minds each and every day and making them feel special to shine in their own way. Ms. Veda, you are special. A teacher like you is hard to find because amazing teachers like you are simply one of a kind. I wanted to share with you how special this evening is from a principal's perspective. The only way I can explain it is by relating to how I feel as a parent when my child accomplishes great things. As a parent, you put all of your emotions and energy into nourishing your child, making sure they have the tools and resources to grow and flourish and support them during the ups and downs. It's similar to that of a principal's role in a school for teachers in a way. As a principal, you're always trying to nourish and to guide your teachers, and the feeling inside when your teachers get this Teacher of the Year is this level of tremendous pride. And it just makes me so proud of you, Ms. Veda, and you're truly incredible and so deserving of this award.
At this time, I'd like to call up Ms. Carolyn Massara, the recipient of the Educational Services Professional of the Year for TG Connors Elementary. Congratulations to Ms. Carolyn Massara, the recipient of the Educational Services Professional of the Year for TG Connors Elementary School. Ms. Massara is a kindergarten paraprofessional in Ms. Lauren Fleischer's class, Home Room 201. She has been a kindergarten paraprofessional for the past 20 years. Carol goes above and beyond her job description. She is amazing with the children in the classroom. She's compassionate, caring, and kind. She cares for each child as if they are her own and always takes the initiative to work with every child. She cares for each child as if they are her own and always takes the initiative to work with every child. Ms. Massara absolutely loves the children. I am sure that we can all imagine ourselves...
I am sure that we can all imagine ourselves at the end of a long day watching our children play in the playground. Sometimes we feel tired and might want to just sit down. Instead of sitting down, Ms. Musara is always playing with the students. She's there playing games with them, playing basketball. On a beautiful day when Ms. Musara is with her students for gym, Ms. Fleischer has often peeked out the window that overlooks the playground, and she sees Ms. Musara playing football or soccer with her class. Ms. Musara takes an active interest in getting to know each child. She has fun with them, jokes around with them, and always looks out for their best interests. She's fully involved in their education and consistently helps students during center rotations. She helps them read and write and helps them with their math problems. She helps them socially and emotionally by teaching and modeling life skills, such as decision-making and problem-solving. She reinforces our school character pillars daily and provides many opportunities to help her students grow. Ms. Musara always takes the initiative. I want to share a quick story. There was one time, right before Diwali, that I wanted to decorate our gym for our school celebration. We were so tight on time, and I was getting a little worried about it. And Ms. Maritza Ramos, our school secretary, and Ms. Musara, shared with me that they were going to take care of it. In about an hour, I had walked into the gym, and there was a beautiful glow of lights and decorations all over the wall. It was magical. When running a school, there are always things that come up, and Ms. Musara is the first one to help out anywhere that she is needed. If an office clerk is out, she's the first one to say, "I will answer the phones." She always will help out anyone who needs help with any student. She's truly amazing and is loved by all our faculty and staff. There is nothing more evident about the impact that Ms. Musara has had on our school community than the admiration of the Connors family. Ms. Fleischer, who has worked with Ms. Musara for the past four years, shared that there is no one else that deserves this award more than Carol. She's kind, compassionate, caring, and loved by everyone. She's an outstanding paraprofessional and always goes above and beyond. I'm so grateful for everything Carol does for our class, and I appreciate her more than she knows it. I'm truly so lucky to have the opportunity to have worked with Carol over the past few years, and I look forward to more wonderful years together. Congratulations again. Ms. Gwendolyn White shared that Ms. Musara is an amazing person with an impeccable work ethic. She personifies the meaning of taking initiative and instantly assesses the environment and initiates things independently to ensure and support us as educators develop the whole child. Ms. Musara is innovative and creative. She's dependable. She's a friend to everyone. She is a majestic gem. Ms. Lason shared that she's not had the honor of working with Ms. Musara in the classroom, but ever since she started at Connors, she felt that she's seen firsthand the genuine warmth and care toward others. Every student or teacher she works with is so lucky to be guided and cared for by Ms. Musara. Mr. Sorefin shared that Ms. Musara is the person in the building who has a skill set to do it all. Her management of the students is firm yet loving. Her ability to create school-wide projects and bulletin boards always captures the best our school has to offer. Ms. Musara makes recess fun and is engaged with every student during lunch, making sure they are fueled up in the afternoon. Lastly, Ms. Musara supports and champions every student in the classroom, and we are so lucky to have her. We are so lucky to have Ms. Musara at Connors Elementary School. We are so proud of you, and you are truly incredible. At this time, I'd like to call to the podium Mr. Martin Shannon, Principal of Wallace Elementary School.
I'd like to introduce you to two amazing people. First, I'd like to introduce you to Mrs. Carolina Martinez. Mrs. Martinez is a tremendous example of professionalism mixed with the amazing ability to drive students to reach their full potential. Mrs. Martinez comes to our district by way of St. Peter's University, where she earned a bachelor's degree for a double major in education. She then began her 21-year teaching career in Hoboken shortly thereafter. Her path started at Wallace, where she obtained tenure-track position where she currently teaches fifth grade. The professionalism with which Mrs. Martinez approaches her daily responsibilities is the product of a mindset dedicated to seeing all students achieve all that our school system promises. This mindset allows her to serve all of our children to the fullest of their ability. Mrs. Martinez embodies the spirit of teaching. She inspires her students to be independent, thoughtful, creative learners. Her students consistently take pride and ownership of their work, find the confidence to try new things, and think outside the box. They are all eager to learn, thanks to the environment that she creates. As Ms. Meza reflected earlier today, this is who Mrs. Martinez is. She highlights the good in people and centers it. One of her other colleagues described Mrs. Martinez as "an exceptional and dedicated teacher to her students." As she says herself, "Teaching is not her career, but it is her passion." She is very engaged in the classroom life. She prepares for her classes and always looks for additional resources to make her lessons interesting. She does go extra miles and truly exceeds expectations. Mrs. Martinez is very proactive with her communication, and thanks to that, both students and parents know clearly what the expectations are. She is also very compassionate and makes sure that all of her students feel included, respected, and loved. Mrs. Martinez is also full of positive energy, and her students are really inspired by her. We are all very lucky to have her as our teacher. Mrs. Martinez's wealth of experience is one of Wallace School's most precious commodities. Her veteran colleagues, as well as those just taking their first steps in the profession, continually seek her advice, whether it is for best classroom practice or how to reach struggling students. Mrs. Gavin put it best: "Mrs. Martinez is a prime example of an educator. She embraces challenges and teaches her students to take risks. She leads by example daily. She works extremely hard to ensure that students receive immediate constructive feedback. She is prepared every second of every day. There is no time wasted in her classroom. She engages the class in high-level conversations that push their critical thinking skills in and out of the classroom. She is a team player and has been very supportive to myself and others around her. She deserves this recognition." Agreed. Without a doubt, Mrs. Martinez is an asset to our school community. It is with great pride and admiration that I congratulate and present to you, Mrs. Carolina Martinez, the 2021-22 Teacher of the Year for the Wallace Elementary School. To say that Nurse Knopka is anything short of amazing would be an understatement. She is an outstanding nurse and a kind and loving human being. She is by far one of the most dependable people I know. Philamina graduated from New Jersey City University with her master's in health sciences in addition to her BSN degree. Before transitioning into the certified nurse role, she... I'm sorry, certified school nurse role, she was employed as an operating room nurse. She was hired in November 2018 to work at Brant School and transferred to Wallace School in September 2020 during the heart of COVID. She is married to her childhood sweetheart, and they have two wonderful sons, Nico and Andrew. She understands the importance of family and maintaining good health and strives to maintain the health and safety of the Wallace students and families and appreciates all their cooperation during the past two years. Nurse Knopka is there for everyone in need of assistance or support. She has been my counsel during the entire pandemic. I have seen her drop everything to assist regardless of the day of week or the time of day. Without a doubt, her presence at Wallace is felt by the entire school community as she is responsible for all of the preventative measures and daily health management of hundreds of children. One of her colleagues is quoted in saying, "Our Nurse Philamina has been and is an instrumental Wallace family member in the management of the pandemic that has affected us all. Her commitment to our welfare and her compassion in making sure that we are all safe is appreciated. Personally, I am grateful to her attention because she made sure that I felt attended to as well as my students." Philamina Knopka, a caring and lovely individual, is deserving of the ESP 2021-22 recognition and praise. Philamina works hard each day to ensure that the school environment is a safe and healthy place where every child can learn. Thank you, Philamina, for your dedication, dedicated service, and partnership in promoting a healthy school environment. Your compassion, optimism, and kindness do not go unnoticed. We absolutely appreciate you. There are really no words for the gratitude that we feel as a family to thank you for all that you've did for us, all that you do for us. Whether it is dedicating time and going above and beyond for our community's children or lending support and wisdom to her peers and colleagues, Wallace School is grateful to call this outstanding educator our own. It is my honor to present to you the Wallace Educational Service Professional of the Year for 2021-22, Mrs. Philamina Knopka.
Please join me in congratulating Hoboken Middle School's 2021-22 Teacher of the Year, It is my pleasure to speak to you about Ms. Bruce. She is so deserving of the honor of Teacher of the Year. After graduating with a bachelor's degree in education and a specialization in math, Ms. Bruce immediately began working towards her master's degree in educational technology at Ramapo College and began substitute teaching. A short while later, she was hired at Thomas C. Connors School, and the rest, as they say, is history. Ms. Bruce began her journey to become a teacher at the University of Maryland, but as I learned from her mom, it started well before that. Her mom shared with me that Melissa was always playing school when she was younger and made her friends be her students. In high school, she was part of a class where she worked in a preschool. There was no doubt in her parents' mind that she would be a total success in the field of education, and they were most certainly accurate with that. Mom couldn't be prouder not only of the teacher she has become, but also the woman and role model she is for her students. Her work ethic is amazing, and her dedication to teaching is first-rate. Melissa's dad shared they couldn't be prouder of her. He was so happy to hear all of her hard work and dedication to her students is recognized. Her husband Cory is the one that gets the pleasure of hearing all about Melissa's days at school. He gets to hear about her interactions with parents, teachers, students. All of it interests him, but doesn't surprise him. According to Cory, Melissa's husband, as you well know, she is extremely dedicated towards anything she takes on, especially her career as a teacher. She's a rule follower, almost to a fault. She has not missed many days of school, that's for sure, and is extremely thorough in how she plans her lessons, provides feedback to her students and their parents. But what he most enjoys hearing about and seeing is her relationships with the students and their families. She loves attending extracurricular activities to support them, and they love seeing her do that. He should know he's attended many of these events with her. Of course, winning Teacher of the Year makes it official, but he's heard students call her their favorite teacher well before this recognition. She loves incorporating her real life into lesson plans and exercises for her students. Their dog, Small Fry, is often the subject of her math problems, and the students get an absolute kick out of that. It shows them that she is a real person out of the classroom just like them, and that's one of the many reasons both Cory and her students adore her. He also would like us to know that she is good at everything she does, whether it is teaching, being a mentor, or a role model for her students. She devotes 100% of herself to everything she does. She is a thorough, thoughtful, and passionate person. Speaking of her students, they had a lot to say about Ms. Bruce, but overwhelmingly, the words that kept coming up were kind, fun, and funny. Ms. Bruce makes learning fun. She really helps the students understand, and part of that is because she understands what it's like to be a student. She tells stories from when she was a student and gives them the time they really need to comprehend what they are learning. Sometimes she even does it with a wink, wink, nudge, nudge, "Go check your work again." I think CJ Thede summed it up best: "She's just too awesome to put into words." Ms. Bruce has been part of the Hoboken Public School District for the entirety of her teaching career. After six years at Connors School, she transitions with the sixth graders to the middle school, and I will certainly not be giving her back anytime soon. The sixth-grade team has also had some words to share about Ms. Bruce: Dedicated, organized, professional, and inspirational. Ms. Fernandez counts Ms. Bruce as a role model and the embodiment of a great teacher. Ms. Taglary shared that Ms. Bruce is a great role model for her students and gives 110% every day. Professionally, Ms. Bruce has been an asset to our district. Over the last nine years, she has been an active member of various programs and committees. She's been an integral part of the Professional Development Committee and an integral part of the curriculum team. It is very fitting that on this International Women's Day, we honor this role model, teacher, professional, and friend. Thank you, Ms. Bruce, for your dedication to our profession, our district, and the Hoboken Middle School students.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call up Mr. John LeBeg, our Governor's Ed- At this time, I'd like to call up Mr. John LeBeg, our Governor's Educator of the Year When Ms. Addy took the position as principal of Connor School, my heart was heavy. I thought, there is no way we will ever be able to match the passion and enthusiasm of Ms. Addy. Was I ever wrong? Because from our first interview, I knew he was the one. Mr. LeBeg radiates passion for teaching science, and if Ms. Addy had a twin brother, it would be Mr. LeBeg. Mr. LeBeg earned his Bachelor of Science in Biology from Ramapo College of New Jersey in 2006. His Master's of Science in Biology from Rutgers and JIT in 2008. He began his career and found himself in the research field until about 2012, at which point he moved to Fairleigh Dickinson University, working as a laboratory supervisor, and then an adjunct professor of biology at Ramapo College of New Jersey until 2019. Then he came to our call for a biology teacher. I can remember his interview, as well as his enthusiasm, but also his uncertainty about whether to make the move. Of course, he wanted to discuss it with his wife, and when he called me to say he was in, I knew we made the right decision. During his first year, if I was walking around, he often thanked me for hiring him. He expressed his love for the school and the position often, and how happy he was that he chose us, to which I always responded, "We are very happy you chose us as well." He's an exceptional educator. Not only is he dedicated to his students within the classroom, but goes above and beyond outside of the classroom as well. His passion for his content area and teaching is unmatched and is always evident as he is constantly finding ways to engage his students. He creates a classroom environment that makes us all, most importantly, students feel welcome and safe to share their ideas and thoughts. He is constantly learning to improve his craft and never hesitates to try something new. Mr. LeBeg loves to engage in conversations with his colleagues on best practices. He is open to new ideas and always makes time for his colleagues to share his ideas. When we needed someone to be trained for Project Lead the Way, Mr. LeBeg was there. We needed AP Bio teacher, he trained for that. As a matter of fact, I think you trained back-to-back for those. You were gone for like three weeks. Three long weeks. This past year, we implemented the pre-AP program, and his hand was up again to train and teach this class. Outside the classroom, he is just as passionate. He is our Environmental Science Club Advisor, New Jersey STEM Communities Challenge Advisor, and a Green Team member. In August of this year, Dr. Johnson introduced us to the Student Space Flight Experiments Program, SSEP. And we all knew when Dr. Johnson introduced us to this, this wasn't like, hey, check this out. This was like, you're gonna do this. And I was like, of course. And in my mind, I'm thinking, who? It's August. This is like such a time. And then it hit me. It was Mr. LeBeg. I was just gonna come back and say Mr. LeBeg was doing it. He, of course, thought I gave him a gift on Christmas morning. He's like, this is great. I want to get involved. This endeavor was huge. The nature of the project, the amount of work and time constraints. He was able to put together five teams, guide students through their research to develop amazing experiments and proposals, submit them, all five of them, to the National Center for Earth and Space Science Education. And I am thrilled to share that our team's project was chosen to fly to the International Space Station on their next mission trip. It was supposed to be this spring, but it was just postponed to the fall of the year. Ms. McReeve shared that Mr. LeBeg has fully embraced our school since day one. His open, friendly demeanor contributes to his great relationship with students and staff alike. He has not hesitated to participate in school initiatives like our annual Day of Steam, our digital citizenship team, and even took on the very time-consuming yet worthwhile leadership role in the SSEP program. Even though he is also pursuing his own further education, he finds time to share his energy and enthusiasm with his coworkers and his students. He is definitely an anything-is-possible kind of person. Mr. Thomas shared that he knows his content so well and is able to bring a college-level education to our students. I have learned so much working with him. Of course, I reached out to Kai and Phalene, who have worked closely with Mr. LeBeg for the SSEP project and whose projects will be going to the International Space Station. And all they could start doing was throw it out words to me, like organized, enthusiastic, found the money to get us the supplies, like just all these kind, funny, caring. Overall, they said they loved their experience with Mr. LeBeg and could not have asked for a better advisor or a teacher. Thank you, Mr. LeBeg, for your enthusiasm and passion towards science teaching and, most importantly, our students. Thank you. And for our Specialist of the Year, Ms. Stacy Gleason. Poor Gwen has been waiting all night for this.
We're stealing the attention.
Hoboken High School's hidden gem is our guidance department, and Mrs. Gleason is a big part of that accomplishment. Over the years, Ms. Gleason has worked tirelessly to build the guidance team into the best in Hudson County. Ms. Gleason attended Newbury College from 2005 to 2009 in Brooklyn, Massachusetts, where she majored in psychology. After receiving her bachelor's degree, she went on to pursue her master's in school counseling with a concentration in college admissions counseling at Suffolk University in Massachusetts. While there, she received a graduate fellowship working in the financial aid office and continued to work full-time after she graduated. In 2012, after meeting husband Brian, she moved to Hoboken and started working at NYU Polytechnic Institute as an admissions counselor, recruiting in various states across the country. Her goal, though, was always to be a guidance counselor. So in the spring of 2013, she applied to Hoboken High School, and we were lucky enough to get her. A day in the life of a guidance counselor is quite demanding, but Ms. Gleason is the senior counselor, which requires 100% of your attention and time. You need to know each of your students, and you need to ensure you are providing them with opportunities in the areas they expressed interest in. There are college essays, Common Apps, early decisions, financial aid, instant decision days, college information sessions, college visits, onsite, IDDs, field trips, scholarships, and much, much more. At this point, Mrs. Gleason has over 85% of the senior class apply for two- to four-year colleges and 13.3 million in institutional scholarship money earned, but yet still more I might be biased, but I wanted to share what her colleagues had to say. Ms. Markowitz, our new guidance counselor, and the second part of our guidance team, said Stacy is a wealth of knowledge who handles everything that comes her way with such ease and calmness. She's the heartbeat of the guidance team and has served as a great mentor to me during my first year at Hoboken High School. Dr. A. shared, with a New England good-natured heart, quick side-splitting humor, and a knowledge base I still use for my speed dial for, you cannot get better than Stacy. Stacy is a counselor who would give the shirt off her back for others. She thinks about others first, especially our students, both off and on the clock. Whether it is in school, patiently walking families through the often stressful post-secondary planning process, or out on the Hoboken streets grabbing that quick cup of coffee, Stacy is always thinking about her students. Any student and family who has you as their counselor should consider themselves lucky. Ms. Drumgill said, "It has been my complete pleasure watching Stacy grow in her position over the past eight years." As we all do, Stacy started off green, doing her best to learn the ropes and meet the expectations placed upon her. But before we knew it, Stacy had become a master at her craft, guiding students along with their nervous parents through their high school careers. Every time I listen to her speak about school schedules, AP classes, college applications, Genesis, Navions, and the forever dreadful phosphorus forms, I am repeatedly impressed with her skill set. Stacy is one of the most dedicated, knowledgeable, compassionate, and hilariously funny staff members in our building. I am proud to call her a colleague and a close friend. I think the humor thing keeps on making its way back in there. Mrs. McReeve, as a red-wing parent, said, "As a red-wing parent as well as a staff member, I wholeheartedly agree that she is the dream guidance counselor." For me, I find comfort in knowing that Ms. Gleason is part of our team. She connects with students in such a positive way, getting to know them and their families. Whether they are applying for an Ivy League college or community college, her work ethic and dedication to the process is the same. Her sense of humor brings comfort to students as well as her colleagues, and her ability to laugh at herself is so calming. I thought it appropriate to end with what Andrew Castlin, a current senior, said to me. He asked me if he could write two paragraphs, and I said, "No, we can't write two paragraphs." I said, "Some words, Andrew," and then he just shot this off at me. Ms. Gleason is inspiring and has been able to point me in the right direction when I couldn't see which way it was. Stacy, thank you for pointing our students in the right direction. Congratulations. We love you.
Congratulations to all of those recognized tonight, to our students, keep up the great work, to our teachers and service professionals. We are so appreciative of all that you do for our students, families, and our entire school community. We're so proud and grateful for each and every one of you. Next, I'd like to call up our Hoboken High School Student Government Representative, Ms. Kendall McDonough.
Hello. My name is Kendall McDonough, and I'm the Hoboken High School Student Government School Board Representative, and it is an honor to speak to you this evening. I'd like to start out with a personal congratulations to two of my favorite teachers, Mr. LeBeg and Ms. Gleason. Congratulations on this achievement. The Hoboken High School Student Government and Hoboken High School Student Activities Office has had a productive and busy month. This past month, with the successful morning announcements program, class council meetings, organizational meetings, 100th Day of School sticker event, Valentine's Day flower sale, and we are in the midst of a food drive, flag raising, and Read Across America initiative. Members will be reading to younger students, beginning with Ms. Martinez's class in Wallace on Thursday. The student government hosted a school-wide $2 dress-down day on 2-2-2-2 to benefit Derek Jeter's Turn Two Foundation. The school-wide initiative raised $400 for the foundation. This month is Women's History Month. We are engaged in an aggressive morning announcements and social media campaign to highlight women's historical achievements. This month is also Irish-American Heritage Month. The student government will be hosting an Irish national flag raising on March 11, 2022, at 1:30 p.m. in front of the high school by the flagpole. We hope to see you there. Congratulations to one of our own, Nyla Garcia, Student Government Treasurer and Hoboken High School February 2022 Student of the Month. Well deserved. Food Drive. The Red Wing Cares Coalition is hosting a food drive. The Hoboken community can donate non-perishable items and drop them off at Hoboken High School. The drive is being held till Friday, March 18. All donations will be given to the Cougar Food Pantry at King University. Thank you to Ms. Brianna Drew for approaching us with this worthwhile cause. Hoboken High School Mock Trial. The Hoboken High School Red Wings Mock Trial Team won the Hudson County Championship. The Red Wings prosecution battled Bayonne in the semifinals. Prosecution attorneys Franny Michaels and Daniel Wontrop, together with witnesses Juliette Tyson, Gabe Demopolis, and Rowan Ellison, delivered stellar performances and were victorious over Bayonne, securing their seat in county finals. The Red Wings defense team, led by Andrew Castlin and Franny Michaels, with outstanding performances delivered by witnesses Aiden Benencourt, Sage Gertman, and Asher Schrell, defeated McNair High School to become Hudson County Mock Trials Champions. These victories were only possible because of the hard work and support of the entire Red Wing Mock Trial Team. This is the second Hudson County championship in the last three years. And of course, congratulations to Mr. D. and Mr. D. and Mr. Huggins and the whole Mock Trial Team. Red Wings Indoor Track. The Red Wings Indoor Track and Field Season wrapped up with the Group One Championships this past weekend. Ty Wolf, this year's N2G1 sectional 55-meter dash champion, placed seventh in the 55-meter dash at a time of 6.85 seconds and 13th at a time of 53.4 seconds in the 400-meter. Zaden Simmons, running in the 400-meter, paced 21st at a time of 56.16 seconds. Carolyn Jimenez placed 14th in both the 55-meter dash at 7.875 seconds and the 400-meter dash at 1 minute and 6.7 seconds. Next up, Spring Season. Boys Basketball. The boys basketball team lost to Greenwich 51-36 in the semifinal round of the NJSIAA Section Two Group One State Tournament this Saturday. Robert Brockman scored 12 points for the Red Wings at 16-9, who were still within seven, trailing 33-26 after three quarters before the Ridgers 19-7 closed things out with an 18-10 finish. Joella Lopez finished with nine points, and Josie Lane scored seven for Hoboken. Hoboken was seeded number four and had won five of its last six games prior to facing Greenwich. We are tremendously proud of what the boys team and the coaches accomplished this season. Highlights including the 2021-2022 Division Championship. Model UN. The Hoboken High School Model UN team was at St. Peter's University for the past two days, participating in the Model UN Conference, competing against other schools throughout the county. More details to come on that in the next report. Hoboken Board of Education Theater Department. The Theater Department will be hosting a fundraiser and screening of the movie Encanto on Friday, March 25, at 5:00 p.m. in the auditorium. The cost is $5 per person, and they will have a complete concession stand. Additionally, there will be a Additionally, there will be a Disney and Donuts fundraiser on Saturday, April 2, 2022, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at JFK Stadium. The admission for this is $10. And finally, to round out this report, the monthly luncheon with the Hoboken High School Administration Team will be held on Monday, March 21, 2022, at 12:45 p.m. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you, and thank you for always supporting our Student Government and Hoboken High School. We look forward to seeing you at our events. Go Red Wings!
Thank you, Ms. McDonough. It's always great to get the update on what's happening at Hoboken High School. Next, we'll move to our reports. Ms. Good, do you have a Business Administrator's Report?
No.
Okay, so moving on to Curriculum, Ms. Simons.
The Curriculum Committee met virtually on Thursday, March 3, at 7:00 p.m. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez, Ms. Katamatory, Ms. Delara, Mr. Clopeville, and myself. There are no action items on the agenda, but we've discussed the following items. The district will be hosting two different Title I-funded events. The target dates for both events are in May. The first one will be a Family Life Learning Night for parents and students. 5th, 6th, 7th graders and their parents and caregivers will be invited to this event, which will cover topics of puberty, followed by healthy lifestyles and nutrition. Students will be attending these sessions in small group settings to view a video on puberty produced by Procter &amp; Gamble, followed by an opportunity for them to engage in Q&amp;A amongst their peers. While the students are in their sessions, parents will be attending a session on healthy lifestyles for pre-teens and teens. After these educational sessions, everyone will be invited to the cafeteria to sample healthy food choices provided by Chartwell's. The content of the student portion will be provided to parents prior to the sign-up of the event, so parents can decide whether they want their children to participate. The second event will be a Family Science and Wellness Night event. The event will include hands-on activities and educational pieces focused on a variety of topics, fitness, nutrition, and the body. The event will include exhibits of organs and have a heavier emphasis on biology. Similar to our math and winter nights, students' work of all grade levels will be on display. Orton-Gillingham Training is extended to all middle school special education teachers and will continue to be offered to more teachers in the upper grade levels. COGAT testing is underway, as well as access testing for 35 ESL students throughout the district to determine English language proficiency levels and progress. At the high school, 100% of the 15 students that took the SEAL by literacy exam earned the award. Forty-seven students have achieved the certification for the Wise Financial Literacy Certification. College Planning Night will be hosted on March 16 for 10th and 11th graders. And LEAP registration is currently underway, and details can be found on the district website. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will turn to Ms. McGurk for Facilities.
Good evening. The Facilities Committee met virtually on March 3, 2022. In attendance were Superintendent Dr. Johnson, Mr. Callagie, Ms. Katamatory, Mr. Delatorre, Ms. Kana, and myself. There are two agenda items on the March Agenda for Facilities, and we recommend both for board approval. The first is the approval of the monthly safety drills, and the second is a facilities use request from ZOG Sports for JFK Field. ZOG is going to be conducting adult soccer and football leagues at JFK Stadium on Wednesdays and Sundays from 7:30 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., beginning March 27 and ending in early July. The committee also discussed the following non-agenda items. The SDA grant money that the district received this year totaling $385,000 will be used to upgrade the teachers' lounges and restrooms in the Hoboken High School and all three elementary schools. At the middle school, the funding will support the renovation of three teachers' lounges and restrooms and two student restrooms on the lower level. The High School Student Activities Group will be providing food and snack service for the upcoming rugby games at JFK Stadium in lieu of New York Rugby bringing in outside food trucks. This is a great opportunity for our district clubs to earn some money to support their programming throughout these sales. And that is, oh, also, the high school data room has had upgrades to the ventilation system, and there's been enhanced sanitation protocols that have been in place all throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. Those remain in place despite the ending of the mask mandate on Monday. And that was all for Facilities for March. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Delatorre.
Finance Committee met on Wednesday, March 2, at 7:00 p.m. In attendance were Ms. Good, Ms. Lopez, Ms. Kana, Ms. McGurk, Ms. Angley, and myself. All agenda items were discussed, and we recommend all for approval.
And Governance, Ms. Takarian.
Hi, good evening. The Governance and Personnel Committee met virtually on Thursday, March 3. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Mr. Clopeville, Ms. Simons, and myself. We discussed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. There are a few items to note. As usual, you'll see a number of resignations, new hires, leave requests, and changes. A few to note about, congratulations to two of our Red Wing community who are leaving to pursue retirement. So congratulations to Mr. Casella and Ms. Drew, both leaving the district to pursue their retirement, with both of them happiness and good health as they embark on this next adventure. The agenda also includes staffing for spring Passport to Learning, spring sports, and upcoming all-district musical, Matilda. We're obviously thrilled to have live theater back in our district this year and being able to put on Matilda, which was planned for 2020? Yes, 2020, and now has resumed for 2022. So excited and encourage everybody to come out for that in May. Also, you'll see on the agenda, 9.13, it's an approval of memorandum of understanding between the Hudson County Office of Emergency Management Equipment by and between the County of Hudson and the Hoboken Board of Education. So this memorandum of understanding is for the supply of bleeding control cabinets. The county has made that a required piece of equipment to have in schools. The county is providing those pieces of equipment to the school, similar to an AED cabinet. It's going to look very similar to that, going to hang on the walls in all of our schools. The County of Emergency Management is supplying those cabinets, and they technically own them. The district is responsible for resupplying anything that is used out of those cabinets. And so thanks to the county for making those available for our district and helping with the safety and security of our students and faculty. We're also reviewed in last meeting how excited we were that in-person field trips were going to return, and you'll see a number of really exciting field trips on the agenda. But the one I wanted to point out most specifically is the return of our Classroom Without Walls Program. The students at the high school level have the opportunity and will be visiting Peru over spring break, so super excited for the students to have that opportunity. A few things just with respect to non-agenda items. As everyone, I think, is aware, in the K-12, a portion of the district, masking became optional as of this Monday. So both for teachers and student staff across the district will be working hard to support all of our community members as they make the decisions for themselves whether they choose to continue to mask or not mask. Also want to point out, unfortunately, Ms. Pietra is no longer here, but she is being honored as the recipient of the Distinguished Services in Arts Education Award by the New Jersey Department of Education. There will be an award ceremony in the spring at the State House in Trenton for her and other state recipients, so congratulations to Ms. Pietra for that. And let's see. You know, we're well into the time of year when we're looking at enrollment and classroom space, and so kindergarten placement and enrollment is well underway with placement letters having gone out. We're looking at a very nice-sized class already, at around 328 students for the incoming kindergarten class, and certainly, as everyone knows, our enrollment is rolling, so we will have plenty of increases in that as the summer progresses, or as spring and summer progresses. We do have most of the enrollment intentions back from our existing pre-K for students, and obviously, we're seeing plenty of enrollment there, and also enrollment for students who may have gone to pre-K elsewhere, moving into the community, or had not participated in pre-K at all. So that is my report for today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Wellness, Ms. Delara.
Sure. The Wellness Committee met on March 3. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, Ms. Angley, Ms. Simons, and Mr. Delatorre. There are no items on the March Agenda. However, there are a few things that I would like to just share with the public tonight. As you all know, the swim program was very successful for our 5th, 6th, and 7th grade families, so I am excited to announce that we will be doing a spring swim program for the 3rd and 4th grade district families. That should be coming out soon, information on that. And for next year, for the fall, we will also be holding a fall middle school soccer program. You know, something that we have been getting some feedback on is making sure that we include our 5th grade families, so this fall middle school soccer program will include 5th, 6th, 7th grade district families. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, next, we will move on to public comments on agenda items.
Good evening. Roseanne Versace, 3rd grade science teacher, Wallace School. This is my favorite meeting of the whole year. I'm sure it is for most of you. I'd like to wish everybody a happy International Women's Day to all the women who are still here and everyone who was here this evening. We are fortunate to have so many strong and determined role models for the young women in our district in all capacities, and may I say, some very inspirational young women who we met this evening. Congrats to the Students of the Month. You make us all proud. That's always a wonderful point of the meeting, to hear all the achievements of our young learners. On behalf of my fellow Executive Board Officers and the membership of the Hoboken Education Association, it gives me great pleasure to congratulate the recipients of the Governor's Educator and Educational Services Professionals of the Year Award. While it's an honor for you to be selected for the outstanding work and dedication you do for our students and demonstrate on a daily basis, it is our honor and privilege to work beside you and call you our esteemed colleagues and friends. And whether you are a classroom teacher, a special subject teacher, a nurse, a guidance counselor, or a paraprofessional, never forget that you are an inspiration to the students that you serve. You bring out the best of them by showing them the best of you. Congratulations again, and thank you for all you do for the students of the Hoboken Public School District. Congratulations also to Gina Matarra, the Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse 2021 Volunteer of the Year recipient. The importance of the work you do for the students cannot be overstated. You are not just their counselor, but also a friend at a time when they need you the most. Thank you for all that you do. At this time, I would also like to acknowledge and congratulate two of our colleagues who will be retiring at the end of the school year, John Casella and Consetta Drew. Between them, they have close to 80 years of teaching service to the children of Hoboken. John has spent his career as a special education teacher in the elementary, middle school, alternative school, and high school. He was a coach, but more than that, he was often the caring and compassionate father or big brother figure that many of our students needed. Consetta Drew has been an esteemed member of the Child Study Team as a learning disability consultant. She is often the go-to person when anyone has a question about special education law or requirements for some of our most vulnerable students. Additionally, she has served as a valued and dedicated member of the Hoboken Education Association, serving as treasurer and a member of our negotiating team. On a personal level, Consetta and I have known each other for most of our lives. In typical Hoboken fashion, our mothers were friends, she was a classmate of my cousin, we attended the same elementary school and church growing up. While we will surely miss her expertise, her bubbly personality and warming smile might be what we miss the most. Congratulations to Mr. Casella and Mrs. Drew. While you will be missed, we hope you have a long, happy, and healthy retirement. Thank you.
All right, so now we'll move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion? Can we have the roll call, please, Ms. Good?
Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Kana?
Yes.
Mr. Clopeville?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Takarian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now we'll move on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Just a reminder, please state your name, municipality of residence, and business affiliation, if any. Thank you.
My name is Norman Horing. I live at 625 Washington Street in Hoboken. I'm an emeritus professor at Stevens Institute of Technology. My presence here has nothing to do with my position at Stevens, and I'm not in any way a representative of Stevens here. Can you hear me better?
Yes.
Thank you for letting me know. I served as an active professor of theoretical physics at Stevens for 50 years, and I retired five years ago, but I maintain my office and continue to do research at Stevens. I'm completely retired and otherwise, but that is plenty of activity. I'm a longtime resident, and I thought to come here because since I first entered Stevens in 1966, since then, I've heard repeated complaints about the educational system in Hoboken, the public educational system. I gather that it's improved since, but I think that it still may have a way to go. Many parents that I know have sent their kids to private schools that were very expensive, when public education, I know from my own experience, can be very effective, even more so. I went to Stavison High School and got my bachelor's degree in physics at City College of New York, and that was a wonderful, wonderful school. It was well-supported, but it did not have a graduate program, but I was able to get a fellowship to Harvard for doctoral studies after that, and that began my career. I think that there are aspects of my experience at Stevens, my teaching experience, and by the way, let me say that I am really deeply impressed by the appreciation that I have seen here tonight for teachers. Teachers are vastly under-respected and generally underpaid, but I was really moved by what I saw here. Now, I have a great deal of experience with teaching at all college and levels up to doctorate for these 50 years, but I've done other things at Stevens, too. In the mid-1980s, Stevens was losing many of the students, failing in the first two years. The dean at the invocation when fresh students would come in, the dean would The dean, at the invocation when fresh students would come in, the dean would tell them, "Look to the student to your right and look to the student to your left. One of the three of you will not graduate this school." That was a very serious problem with a 33% failure rate, and the provost asked me to establish a free tutoring service to help the students in academic difficulty. I did, I did so. It was called the Academic Support Center, the Stevens Academic Support Center. It took about a year to recruit and to full-body of tutors and to get it running completely. I ran that Academic Support Center for about 10 years, significantly reducing the student attrition, and also getting state of New Jersey funding to support it. Pardon me?
There's a five-minute rule. So we do want to hear what you have to say. You have 30 seconds left, and then we can continue the conversation after the meeting, if you'd like.
Well, give me a few minutes if you can, please. I have some good ideas.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you very much. After that, I decided to put more of my time into physics research and turned over the Academic Support Center to a dean, and since then, in the mid-1980s, the Stevens Academic Support Center continues to function fruitfully to this day. My suggestion tonight is to have a Hoboken Academic Support Center set up by the Board of Education and the City of Hoboken. That is, would be to provide free tutoring, and I can see offhand two groups that can greatly benefit from it. One are students whose families cannot help them academically at home, perhaps because of language issues or lack of experience. And the other is to help students whose families can help them academically at home, but need additional help for advanced placement courses and to fight to get scholarships at the best colleges in the world, in fact. Now, the reality of this, of course, is that there has to be support, and what I'm specifically suggesting, pardon me, what I'm specifically suggesting is to provide about 4,000 hours per week distributed over all of the schools, including grammar schools, as well as middle schools and high school. I would expect it to take about a year to build and establish a sufficient body of tutors. In that respect, it would be worthwhile to try to engage Stevens students as tutors. There are over 4,000 undergraduates at Stevens right now, and over 4,000 graduate students at Stevens. This would not be a Stevens function. It has its own Academic Support Center, but this is a great body of, a great reservoir of knowledgeable young people who can help even younger ones. I mean, I did that throughout my life. When I was in high school, I was teaching, I was helping to tutor younger students at the lower level. When I was in college, I was doing the same, and these things can also generate support. I estimate that at 4,000 hours per week of tutoring, and don't look at me, I'm not looking for that job, but I estimate that that could be, it costs about $4 million per year, and I think there is hope and good possibility for both federal and state support for such a program. That's it. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you so much.
If you have questions, I'll be happy to.
Thank you. We can't have a dialogue right now, but we thank you very much for your comments, and we can chat after. Thanks.
Mary Andreca?
Mary Andreca, 159 Ninth Street. I've always been impressed with Norman, and he is an incredible man, and he has a lot of good advice. I believe that a lot of the people that voted that referendum down looked at two things. They looked at academics, and they looked at building. What we need for the students is to pay attention to the students. A building does not teach, teachers do, and parents. That's important. He's got, he started a tutoring program that actually made a difference. It would be wise if you, he wanted to come here, I didn't ask him to come here, to please consider what he has to say and contact him. I wanted to mention something tonight, no, I'm not going to talk about the vote, but I would hope that something would be in progress in the future because you need a Plan B, because you will never have a high school built on that property. There will never be enough people in this city that will vote for it. I'm sorry, but that's the way it is. Majority of the people were about 43 years old that voted in that election, and they were mainly Democrat, too, so you can't blame it on the old people or the pathetic Republican numbers in this town. That's all I'm going to say. You really need to think about preparing for the future. Don't, you can't put that same program a year from now. We could be at war, and we will be spending our money elsewhere. The other thing I think is important, I'm not a parent, but I think every single one of you should be aware that there will be five marijuana stores in this town. That bothers me, because I'm not some prejudiced person, but I have migraines, I can't stand the smell of it, and I know what it can do to the mind. I come from a generation where I saw a lot of people smoke it. I did not, because I did not want to influence my brain and ruin it. Their memory's shot. Younger people will be in contact with it incredibly now. You can't walk down the street without smelling it. I have to go home and wash my nose out because it nauseates me, and it's a lot stronger, 20% THC. It's not your father's marijuana. There also are companies that want to put them, want to, there's an allowance that they're not supposed to be built between 500 feet, but now they want to make it 750, and the new people are going to complain about that and not want that. You should all go to the council meeting. There's going to be one on Zoom next week. Tiffany is beside herself, but in 2019, before the pandemic, I always go to the council meetings, yes, why I do it, I don't know, I'm not a political person. I spoke against this because, number one, it will affect every human being. We live in a town of small, closed quarters. It's not by themselves anymore. You're not, it's not a business by itself. It's going to be below you. What are they going to do in buildings with 10 people? I personally resent this because I can't stop it, but I spoke against it. Be careful what you wish for. There's five of them, and their locations cover the entire town, uptown, downtown, midtown, five of them. Two downtown Hudson and River, the dispensaries, but it's moot because they're going to change the licenses over to retail. Now, you can smoke it all you want, that's your business. I don't care what somebody does in their barns or their houses and their garages, but when it affects people that live in close quarters, and I am afraid for the children. I went to school and we were taught about drugs. I don't know what the school system does in Hoboken, and I would hope that you will educate the students about that, because when I was in sixth grade and I was told about the drugs and speed, amphetamine and LSD and all that, I thought, why the hell does someone do this to themselves? I never did. You have great influence over children. Please be aware of what's happening. I feel sorry for Tiffany because it's in her ward, she has no control. I went and looked at the Hudson Tavern, that's 3,000 square space, 6,000, top and basement and bottom. There's many children in that part of town. There's a whole community. So I'm giving you the warning that you ought to really say your voice and be concerned because it's going to be a nightmare. And once a city opts in, like we did, you can't opt out. So I have migraines, and I have my own problems to deal with it. No, it does not help migraines. I've studied about migraines all my life, and I know. It makes a lot of money for a lot of people and a lot of medical companies say so. It's just that you're going to have a city of stone people. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just state your name. Municipality of residence. My name is Daniel Thompson. I'm a Hoboken resident. I just wanted to reiterate Dr. Horring's suggestion about tutoring and so forth. Dr. Horring is a brilliant professor. I actually studied with him at Stevens a while ago, and he's a great teacher, and the fact that he's willing to participate and give you advice about how to help your students with tutoring, I think is something that you should really try to take advantage of. I know that Stevens had a good program where they had tutors. Actually, when I was first there, I was involved with tutoring, and they, the tutors gave classes where they helped people to understand, solve problems, and use what they were learning to solve problems, and also to tutor them individually to be specific to their problems. This is something that would be very useful for the high school and elementary school and so forth, to have it focused on the students, and so I think that Dr. Horring's suggestions are something that you should really consider and follow up on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Oh, sure. Yep.
Leslie Orwood, 49 Wall Terrace, Hoboken. The suggestion is a very good one. Actually, I think the district already does do a tutoring program for high school students that are studying for the SAT, and the Stevens students do tutor the high school students in the SAT, and this is in a program that's been going on for many years. So I think your idea to maybe expand that program is a good one, but that's something that the district has already been doing for many, many years, and we thank you for your leadership in educating the students of Stevens in this town. One thing I don't think you get enough credit for is something that got slipped in here this week, this session, and over with Melanie last month, and I think many people were so shocked, we didn't even have a chance to react last month. People call me an advocate, I don't know. I certainly want the best for all of our students, just like you do, and I've been encouraging additional training, particularly in Orton-Gillingham method, which, no surprise, I have two children who struggle to read, they're both autistic and ADHD, but the Orton-Gillingham method, as trustee Kirian said last session, last month, it helps all students and not just those struggling to read. And if we're talking about equity in our district, getting all our students to read is a key part of equity, right? So we heard that, and there were so many parents here that heard that and were so happy, and then we spread the word. So thank you very much to the district for hearing the parents say that this is something that is a new method that would be helpful to adopt and to help those who struggle of all kinds throughout the elementary years. And the wealthy students actually have been paying $150 an hour for Orton-Gillingham tutors. You know, some people are able to afford that, others aren't, and it is a treasure that you are training all of the K-5 teachers in this Orton-Gillingham method, that is evidence-based method to teach children how to read. And when I spread the word about that, because you don't get credit for it enough, it's a little mentioned in the board meeting, but people don't hear it, so I spread the word, people raised their hands and said, hey, what about this? What about the other thing? What about going to train the middle school teachers? Because there's students there with dyslexia that could benefit from the Orton-Gillingham method, having their teachers trained in it, and what did you do? You expanded it to the middle school teachers. And so, everybody can always get better. No one's perfect, right? But all we can expect from our administration is that you work with the parents in a transparent manner, and when there are good suggestions, that you accept them, you train the teachers in them, and we all move forward together to raise everyone higher. And I just want to say, I appreciate your willingness to work with the parents and all that you do on behalf of the students of Hoboken, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, that concludes our meeting. This was a great one, always my favorite meeting of the year. So with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.